I'd like to call the Lancaster Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. In the unlikely event of an emergency, if we have to evacuate the room, please note the locations of the exits. At this time, I ask that you silence your cellphones and rise for the pledge of allegiance, and please remain standing for a moment of reflection. I declare the allegiance. Goodbye, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we remain standing for Claire Schlum, an English teacher at the high school from 1966 through 1998, who passed away on November 12th, 2022, and for Dolores LePrau, an English teacher at the middle school from 1962 through 1995, who passed away on November 26th, 2022. Thank you. Moving on to 4.0 presentation, we have a presentation on safety and security with Jamie Phillips, Amy Muller, John Tresman, Greg Hare, Stacy Malte, and Bill Lauer. And John Armstrong as well, thank you.
Tonight, we will give you a short presentation on the safety efforts that have been made within this school district over the past several years. Daily, this is on my mind and several other people's minds, whenever there is an emergency or a tragedy or an incident at a school somewhere in the nation, we usually have people reach out that say, what are you doing to keep our schools safe? And we are doing a lot, actually, so we wanted to provide you with an update on that tonight. So, in this district, safety is everyone's responsibility, from standard district-wide protocols to building-level procedures, to people's daily decision-making and awareness. Every administrator, faculty and staff member, SRO and student, plays a role in keeping our buildings safe. Tonight, we have a group of some of our best, who will highlight some of our safety-centered activities within our district. I am Jamie Phillips, this is the superintendent for Business and Support Services, and also board-appointed chief emergency officer, so thank you for that title. We have Amy Muller, principal of Hillview Elementary School, Greg Hare, assistant principal at William Street School, John Tresman, assistant principal at Lancaster Middle School, John Armstrong, the director of Special Education, our SRO LPD officer, Bill Lauer, and SRO Stacy Malte, and then we also have SRO John Zimmerman, who has some SRO duties tonight at William Street for their concerts, so he was unable to attend, but certainly contributed to the presentation content tonight. Tonight, we will give an overview of infrastructure and procedural efforts. We will highlight the Safe and Loved Arrival Procedure, the District-wide Safety Committee, our Altara Safety Consultants contract, our Building Level Safety Committee, rapid response lockdowns, threat inquiries and mental health services, our SRO's roles in our schools, and the Lancaster Police Department in our schools otherwise, with training and our new liaison program. In the past 10 years, the Board of Education and Community has committed millions of dollars through capital improvement projects and budgetary appropriations to reconstruct, upgrade, and add to the existing infrastructure and systems to enhance the safety and security of and within our facilities. The ideas for these improvements have come about in a variety of ways: walkthroughs and assessments with Lancaster Police and DePue Police, Erie One BOSI's Health and Safety Staff, Don Shomet and Altara's Consulting Group, suggestions from district-level and building-level safety committees, building administrators, and building faculty and staff have also contributed. Best practices learned from other school districts, New York State Education Department, and by reviewing factors from incidents throughout our country, are also contributing factors. Our internal and external collaborations have and will continue to drive our safety-centered improvements. A pretty comprehensive summary of our infrastructure updates is up on the screen, but I will highlight a few of our capital improvements. We've completed main entrance reconstruction at all school buildings, exterior door and window replacements, door and window hardening, and installation of door access points in various strategic places throughout each building. Our staff wear ID badges for identification, and also use them for building entry at exterior access points. We also have entryway intercoms and cameras. These updates all restrict and control access to the interior of our facilities. The interior door replacements, lock replacements, window and door shades, and door wedges allow our students and staff to be able to swiftly and properly lock down in an emergency any place within the building. We have a new PA system in each building, new phone systems, clock systems, security systems, fire alarm systems, panic buttons, and secondary 911 phone lines that improve notification, communication, and response in an emergency. Additional walkie-talkies, additional and upgraded cameras, and relocated SRO offices further enhance communication and responses in these situations. The phone system is one of our most notable yet unnoticed improvements to safety within our buildings. The upgraded system allows for a phone in each classroom, doubles as a synced or standalone PA system, and has given us the ability to have all faculty and staff call an emergency response at their discretion from any location within the building. In a situation where seconds matter, this feature is priceless. With respect to the camera systems, every year, we are working with our camera vendor to improve the camera system by updating existing cameras and adding new camera locations. We take advantage annually of a $35,000 New York SAFE Act fund, and as part of our current $77.1 million capital improvement project, we are upgrading the server and backup server for our camera system, which will allow us for more camera units on the system and therefore more cameras throughout our buildings. Paired with our infrastructure upgrades, time and money has also been continuously allocated to some procedural improvements. There is a comprehensive summary on the screen, and many will be discussed by my colleagues tonight, so I'll just highlight a few. We've reinvented our district and building-level safety teams to include more stakeholders, meet more regularly and frequently, and to focus on various aspects of safety and security. District and building-level emergency plans are reviewed and updated annually. Also annually, faculty, staff, and service providers participate in mandatory training on prevention and emergency response in K-12 schools, district-specific emergency response plans, DASSA, reporting child abuse, and suicide prevention. Training is provided on building response plans and to emergency response teams within the buildings. Students are trained through the emergency drill process. Many outside offerings are also available throughout the year for administration, safety teams, and faculty and staff on safety-related matters. Across the district, we have a standardized emergency drill language and have provided quick-reference emergency cards. No matter what building a staff member, substitute, buildings and grounds staff member or student is in, the steps to call an emergency and to take in an emergency are the same universally. We've increased the number of drills performed annually and standardized our building visitor and volunteer protocols. I mentioned briefly that some of our infrastructure upgrades are a result of safety walkthroughs. Tapping into the expertise of some of the industry's finest, we've had several building walkthroughs throughout the years with Lancaster Police, DePue Police, Erie One BOSI's Health Safety Risk, helping us identify areas throughout the building in which improvements could be made. In 2019, we contracted for a visit and services from Don Shomet, who is a dynamic nationally-recognized violence prevention effort with a concentration in human safety, threat assessments, student safety assessments, community policing, and school-based officers. In 2021, through Southern Westchester BOSI's, we contracted with Altara's Consulting Group for assessment, training, and planning services, and are currently in the middle of our contract with them. So I'll now turn it over to Amy Muller to discuss one of the outcomes of Mr. Don Shomet's visits, and that is the Safe and Loved Program.
Good evening. Every child who enters our Lancaster schools each morning brings pure joy to our jobs. It goes without question that all of our Lancaster staff members love, respect, and deeply care about our students and their safety. In 2019, the concept of Safe and Loved was introduced to our schools. After attending a variety of trainings with Mr. Don Shomet, Lancaster staff members studied research that shows that something as simple as greeting a child each morning can make a world of difference about how they feel about themselves. We want them to feel loved, cared about, and most importantly, that they've arrived at a very safe, supportive, and nurturing learning environment. With the Safe and Loved Program, the following bullet points are priorities: Our staff members serve as effective safety layers and safety filters; Our staff members set a positive tone for the school day; Our staff members send a strong message of care for our students; Our staff members work hard to enhance relationships with our students; Our staff members are more accessible to students, and this enhances communication and support for our students' needs. Next slide, please. Mr. Shomet stressed that no student should arrive to their homeroom without hearing the words like "good morning," "welcome," or have encountered some other positive exchange with a staff member. Everyone is a part of this effort: bus drivers, staff members stationed in the drop-off loop or bus loop, staff members supervising at the entrances, and those who are standing in the hallways as students walk towards their classrooms. Since I am the principal of one of our K3 buildings, I can share my observations in Hillview during morning arrival and dismissal time. Each morning at 8:50 a.m., our students are either dropped off at our front loop facing Transit Road, or they are released from their buses in the bus loop facing Pleasant, Pleasant Blue Drive, excuse me, Pleasant View Drive. With close to 500 students entering the building at once, we are dedicated to ensuring that they feel safe and loved from the moment they exit their vehicles or buses, and when they walk through the door. We have staff members, along with school resource officer Zimmerman, our Lancaster Police Department Liaison Officer Zaffram, happily greeting students after they exit their vehicles. At the bus loop, our dedicated bus drivers kindly wish our students a great day, and then release them to the staff members in the bus loop, who enthusiastically welcome them and ensure that they safely arrive at each entrance. Next slide, please. It is truly a team effort each day. Even when students walk the hallways or prepare to enter their classroom, they are warmly greeted and welcomed with smiles, with high fives, with fist bumps, and more. We tell them that we are so happy that they are at school with us, and we compliment them. We do everything that we possibly can and know how to do, without a doubt, so that they forever feel safe and loved at their school. At dismissal, we developed a very strategic system to safely and securely release students to parents and guardians, who are picking up students in the front loop facing Transit Road. We release students to a few buses at a time in the bus loop, carefully keeping an eye on our surroundings. We are proud of our arrival and dismissal procedures. We tweak things as needed. We follow any recommendations that are provided by our school resource officers. And most importantly, we always work hard to ensure that our students feel safe and loved every day at Hillview and at all of our Lancaster schools.
Good evening, everyone. The district-wide safety committee has been implemented to work collectively and collaboratively with many stakeholders involved, and ensuring that we are providing a safe environment for the students, faculty, and staff within the Lancaster Central School District. The committee consists of 33 members, including a variety of representatives directly associated with the school district, including students, the school board, teachers, administrators, as well as school safety and other personnel. The committee also includes various outside stakeholders, such as liability insurance carrier risk management specialist, Erie One BOSI's Health Safety Risk Specialist, workers' compensation carrier representative, and insurance agents. As a committee, we meet five to six times annually to discuss policies, protocols, and services to enhance district safety and security. We also debrief on acts of violence across the country in partnership with the Altara's Consulting Group. On an annual basis, we review and update the comprehensive district-wide school safety plan. We also serve as liaisons to connect the building to the work done within the committee. As co-chairs of the committee, Greg Hare and I would like to personally thank everyone for their time and efforts in creating a safe environment. The Altara's Consulting Group continues to be a great resource for the district as we enter our third year of partnership with them. The Altara's Consulting Group is owned and staffed by retired law enforcement experts. They work with a significant cohort of district downstate, with Lancaster being the first district in Western New York, with many districts following shortly thereafter. This led to an initial overhaul of our building-level and district-wide safety plans. Altara assists districts by identifying security gaps, validating best practices, providing training, and implementing security solutions in the name of improving safety. Starting in 2021, Altara's has provided a physical security assessment on each building, provided with online and in-person training for administration, emergency response teams, and other faculty and staff. Altara's also assisted in the complete overhaul of our district and building-level response plans to include all New York State SAVE requirements and district-specific protocols. With yearly guided updates to each of the plans, Altara's has kept us up to date by providing accurate information on current events relating to acts of violence in schools and social media trends across the country. Altara's works closely with the district while we update the threat inquiry as well. John Armstrong will provide more information about the threat inquiry later in our presentation. As a district, we are thankful for our partnership with Altara's Consulting Group and the work that we've done with Brian Shanahan specifically, as we continue to work together in creating a safe environment here in Lancaster.
Building-level safety committees are composed of multiple stakeholders in each building. The primary responsibility is to develop a school emergency response plan specific to the individual building. While these plans are aligned with the district's safety and emergency management plan, the individual building plans are very specific to meet the needs of each building. Building-level safety committees meet regularly throughout the year to reevaluate safety procedures in each building. New York State Education Department requires 12 safety drills annually, eight fire drills, and four lockdown drills. Across the district, we exceed the lockdown requirement and strive to have a rapid response lockdown drill at least monthly in each building. The Rapid Response Lockdown Protocol is another outcome from Don Shomet's services. There is a 99% chance of survival in an intruder situation if you are able to get the classroom door closed and locked in under seven seconds. The doors in our buildings are always in the locked position. The Rapid Response Lockdown Procedure focuses on people moving faster. Move fast, get children in classrooms, lock and close the doors. With frequent drills, we are improving the urgency and muscle memory of our faculty and staff. The implementation of the Rapid Response Lockdown Drill Protocol has allowed the buildings to practice the most important steps of a lockdown, use consistent language across the district, and practice it more frequently. As opposed to traditional drills, where instruction was interrupted for quite some time, a Rapid Response Drill takes about three minutes to complete.
Well, folks, since I started teaching in 1992, things sure have changed, right? As we go through our elaborate and pretty comprehensive programs, but I know when I got into administration and thinking about that time, it was about the time of the Columbine Incident, which was the shockwave that went across schools in the nation, so it's really good to see just all the things we've done to, as best as we can, to ensure the safety. So in terms of threat inquiries, this is a process that gathers additional information on the nature of a threat and attempts to quantify the relative risk when a student makes a threat, usually towards someone else in our schools. It's quite a longstanding process in our district. We've been at it in one form or another, but more formally for about eight years. A lot of our leaders in our buildings, including some of our school psychologists, have been at the forefront of this and doing the research to come up with best practices. As Mr. Tresman mentioned, over the summer, we met as a committee and spent some time reviewing our current threat inquiry process, and also had the Altara's Group review our procedures. So based upon that feedback and just any of the kind of needs, we updated a lot of our, not a lot of our procedures, but tweaked a few items to make it more comprehensive and to reflect best practices and to reflect recent events in the nation. I should also point out, the district sometimes uses, in response to what we might come out with with our internal threat inquiry results, we will sometimes then go outside and hire usually some kind of forensic psychologist or an other specialist to do what we call outside threat assessments, which are, if you will, an outside, more objective, possibly a second opinion on the results that we obtained internally. I want to point out one thing, and then I'll move on to talk about mental health, is the folks in the buildings do the bulk of this work and take it super, as you could expect, super, super serious, right? The administrators get a team together, they meet, they follow our processes, they gather all the information as indicated in our process, then they come back and meet again, and they just, it is a lot, a lot of time, but nothing could be more important, but I wanted to give credit to our administration and all their support staff and anybody that contributes to this process. As far as, in a larger sense, addressing any of the mental health needs, I think our focus with the support of the board has been good. Over the past few years, and in response to our students' and families' needs, the district has made a commitment to hire mental health professionals. Specifically, we've added, in the last, I believe, two years, we've added three social workers and one school psychologist, and the need is there, and we continue to take advantage of those folks working with our families and our students. Our current staffing outlined above is 10 counselors, nine psychologists, and 12 school social workers. Also, I would like to point out that we have ongoing support from our Family Support Center, and this continues to be an available service, where the Family Support Center Coordinator can link students and families to truly specialized counseling and treatment programs that can help address mental health concerns. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to talk about our school resource officers. School resource officers have been in Lancaster School District for over 20 years. Starting in 2002, the first SRO was stationed at Lancaster High School. Since then, they have added an SRO at the middle school and in the elementary schools. Our elementary SRO travels between William Street School and all the elementary schools in the district. We are a visible layer of defense. By being visible, having a presence at our schools, we are available immediately, which is a huge safety benefit. SROs have a daily role interacting with students and building administrators. Building relationships with students creates a positive interaction with law enforcement and enhances a safe learning environment. We are law enforcement officers, law-related educators, community liaisons, and a mentor for students. SROs provide education to students through various classroom visits. Some of the topics include bicycle safety, lockdown safety, internet and online safety, character traits, water safety, stranger danger, traffic stop search warrants, underage drinking, et cetera. Last year, the SROs combined at over 500 classroom visits. We investigate threats and assist with threat inquiries, as Mr. Armstrong presented, and ERPO's, extreme risk protection orders. SROs are members of the district-wide and building-level safety teams. We advise the district on improvements to safety and protocols, and infrastructure. We assist with safety assessment walkthroughs and follow-ups. We work with each of our school administrators with recommendations for arrival and dismissal procedures, and SROs are present at certain athletic events, concerts, dances, and other after-school activities when requested. This, again, builds relationships and helps maintain a safe environment. We also provide support services for mental health by assisting school social workers and psychologists on home visits. We schedule regular visits to each school by Finley, our Lancaster Police Department's therapy dog. Finley has provided support during times of crisis, as well as high-stress weeks at Lancaster High School. The goal is to create a safe environment for all students, faculty, and staff within Lancaster School District.
So as SROs, we are in a unique position to facilitate information very quickly between the school district and the police department. After each school shooting, there are valuable lessons learned regarding how the police responded, or did it respond, or how school districts responded. Each year, my department completes our active shooter intervention training in a different school. This training allows us to continually update our response to a school shooting. It also allows us the opportunity to bring new officers in, so that they can become familiar with our schools. Not all of our new officers went through the Lancaster School District, so for them to be able to come in and become familiar with the school is a huge benefit. My department provides safety and training recommendations to the faculty and the staff during district-wide conference days, faculty meetings, building walkthroughs, and in conjunction with the district-wide safety team. We have provided training to our bus drivers and attendants regarding what to be observant while picking our students up and bringing them back and forth to school. Some of our officers are guest speakers in classes, like the criminal law, or an after-school club, like First Responders Club. Lancaster Police Department has an internship program that provides either a college or a high school student insight into the career of what it's like to be a police officer. Currently, our intern is a senior at the Lancaster High School. He has completed ride-alongs with different patrol officers, assisted with community events, and even participated in department-wide training. We offer a juvenile police academy as well. It's held in the summer, where students can even receive a full credit if they take it in conjunction with the forensics class. During the academy, SROs and other department members instruct the students on law-related topics, scenario-based training, physical fitness requirements, they actually do PTA every morning, policies and procedures, evidence collection, and we even take them out on vehicle traffic stops, where they get to choose whether or not someone gets a ticket. They actually enjoy it a lot, and overwhelmingly, everybody got a break. Students take a written test at the end and complete a crime scene exercise, where they investigate a crime, they collect, document the evidence, they form a conclusion and formally present it to us. Lastly, each year, I complete two tests of the 9/11 phone system and the panic button alarm of every district building to make sure they are performing properly in a timely manner. We have buildings in different jurisdictions, so it's important to know that when someone picks up the phone, dials 911, not only is the dispatcher going to answer it, but the correct information regarding the location, the time, where it's who's responsible for police department, fire department, EMS, is facilitated to our dispatcher. Also, the panic button, when you press that panic button, we respond to all 9/11 calls with panic buttons, regardless of the nature, and our testing is to make sure that that panic button gets to the alarm company, who in turn gets it to our department, and it's relayed to us in a timely fashion.
School Liaison Officer Program. This was implemented in the fall of 2022, a collaboration between Lancaster Schools, Town of Lancaster, Lancaster Police Department, Village of DePue, and DePue Police Department. The School Liaison Officer Program is designed to enhance safety and increase police presence in the district's primary schools. The SLOs, is what we call them, work with school administrators to preserve a safe learning environment for students, teachers, and staff. The primary duty of the SLOs is to work in conjunction with the district administration to protect the district's school's safe environment, to support and maintain an atmosphere that is conducive to learning, instruction, and educational services. Where students, teachers, and staff feel safe, they have a visible presence on school grounds, and they are available to students, faculty, and administration. They provide security and/or law enforcement services as requested by the district. They provide security and/or law enforcement services as requested by the district to improve relationships and act as a liaison between students, law enforcement and the community. There's a total of five officers, one in each elementary building, K through six, daily visits while the school is in session. Again, they enhance the safety and increase police presence at the primary buildings and work with administration to maintain and protect the safe school environment. Before I wrap this up, I'll apologize for not including a picture of Finley. I think he's an important part of our program here. So it's important to say again, in this district, safety is everyone's responsibility. We consider the safety of our students and staff a top priority. Through collaborations and partnerships with various experts and agencies, along with the efforts of our SROs, our liaison officers, our staff, our faculty and our administrators on a daily basis, we've been able to create an environment and a safety program that we have confidence in. We have been told a few times by outside partners that Lancaster is very proactive in the safety arena and really that we're ahead of most districts' efforts on several different fronts. So our program will continue to evolve as there are new developments and as we learn from incidents across the country and as we find new services, products and ways to enhance our safety program. So with that, I would like to thank the board, our faculty and staff, the Town of Lancaster, the Lancaster Police Department, the Village of DePew, the DePew Police Department, Ron Rosler with the Lancaster Office of Emergency Management, Alteris Consulting Group, Don Schumett, Utica National Insurance and our Erie One Bosse's Health Safety Risk Representative for their contributions to the district and the role they play in the safety of our students and staff. And then I also want to thank my colleagues who joined me tonight with that shared some of our efforts with you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I see all those pieces and I think how important each one is, not only separately but altogether. It really does make a difference. So I want to again thank everyone that presented tonight, thank everyone who is on the committees both district-wide and in the schools. And I'd like to thank the Lancaster community for continuing to support this program. So important. So thank you again. Anyone looking for pictures of Finley? He's got an Instagram account, finley.policetherapydog on Instagram. He hasn't posted in a while, but there's some great pictures there. All right, moving on to 5.0 correspondence, we do have two emails on record. 6.0 approval of minutes, 6.1, can I have a motion to approve the regular session minutes from November 14th, 2022?
Sorry.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries? 7.0 items from staff organizations. Anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association?
Yes. You guys, last time, I'd like to publish all of our information, classes or your staff members and of course all of our Lancaster students, very likely have any of your information.
Thank you, Mrs. Mullen. Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
Good evening. The LCTA is working to help to provide those who are in need of some assistance this holiday season. We are currently collecting gift cards to donate to St. Luke's Mission so that people will be able to provide gifts in Christmas dinner for their families closer to home. Members of the LCTA are also assisting our students with their projects and raising money for the Lancaster Youth Bureau. Teachers are participating in cash-for-claws to raise money for the youth bureau so that food and toys can be purchased. I am actually one of the teachers who volunteered to help collect, so I will take donations from the board at the end of the meeting, if you serve the client. Lastly, whether you are celebrating Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa or Festivus, the LCTA would like to wish all of our students, faculty, staff, administrators and board a happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abraham. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel?
Good evening. Kim Wilson's the last. We are trying to be optimistic regarding, excuse me, it's hard to have reading, regarding the upcoming negotiations meeting. Last members continue to work daily even though we haven't had a contract since July 1st. Closing, we'd like to wish the Board of Education a happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas and a wonderful Happy Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Glazer. And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? Onto 8.0, board reports. Anyone from the board that would like to report? And 9.0, superintendent's administrative report. Dr. Valen?
Two things, Mr. Sage. I just wanted to thank everyone and everyone that participated in that safety presentation tonight. This was obviously a 20-minute or so presentation and sort of a microcosm of all the people involved in safety for the purpose of presenting and giving the Board of Education a safety update and of course the community as well. But as superintendent, I know in great detail all the hard work and dedication that everyone does and everyone that's involved. Literally hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people play a vital role in this school district and its safety efforts and the effort we put into and continuously work to make our schools as safe as possible. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you and to everything that you do to make this school as safe as possible. So thank you very much and thanks again for those people taking the time to do that presentation. Just a comment on cooperative learning. The genesis of Kaden Cooperative Learning here in Western New York and its professional development opportunities here throughout this region was right here in Lancaster Schools. Started with a lot of people in this school district and we've been leaders and a catalyst for these instructional strategies in Western New York for a long time now. So from time to time, because of that leadership, we have visitors from other school districts who join us about programming initiatives or projects we're working on. And recently, teachers from the Eden Central School District joined our Kaden Cooperative Learning Group. They asked questions of our experts, visited them and asked about the implementation sustainability. I'd like to thank those teachers, those administrators and those support staff members who were involved in that. And it's really important to continue to talk about the good things that we have going here and to share those opportunities and ideas. And it's always nice to have that shared collaboration. We're really proud of the work we're doing here on that. And even though it was, you know, a temporary setback with the pandemic, it seems to be going back to the way it was and building momentum for the future. So thank you very much for everyone that was involved in that. And finally, I hope everyone has a great holiday and a great season.
Thank you, Dr. Valen. Onto 10.0, old business, old business. Does anyone have any old business to discuss? 11.0, new business. 11.1, personnel items. 11.1 dot one, can I have a motion on the personnel changes?
So.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries? 11.1.2, can I have a motion on the tenure recommendation? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 11.2, education items. 11.2.1, can I have a motion on the Committee on Special Education?
So.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Right.
Anyone against? Motion carries? 11.2.2, can I have a motion on the Committee on Preschool Special Education?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries? Onto 12.0, business and financial items. 12.1, can I have a motion on the financial items?
So.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.2 through 12.7 are all policy readings. 12.2 is a policy first reading. 5681, school safety plans. These are for information only. We will vote on that one in a couple of meetings. 12.3 is a policy second reading, 1640 absentee ballots. That we'll vote on in the next meeting. 12.4 is another policy second reading, 5730, school bus safety. 12.5, policy second reading, 5731, idling school buses on school grounds. 12.6 is a policy second reading, 5740, qualifications of bus drivers. And 12.7, policy second reading, 6560, determination of employment status, employee or independent contractor. Onto 12.8, can I have a motion on the girls hockey agreement?
So.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.9, can I have a motion on the contract with the Town of Lancaster?
So.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.10 is an AIA contract. Can I have a motion for Musco Sports Lighting LLC?
So.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.11, can I have a motion on the bid acceptance for the $77.1 million capital project, Phase Four?
So.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.12, can I have a motion on the club creation?
So.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.13, can I have a motion on the construction change orders?
So.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.14, can I have a motion on the contract with Crisis Prevention Institute?
So.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.15, can I have a motion on the food service operating reports for October 2022?
So.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.16, can I have a motion on the contract with Alden Central School District?
So.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.17, can I have a motion on the surplus equipment?
So.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? 13.0 is our public hearing. We do not have anyone signed up to speak today. And 14.0 is an executive session to discuss the superintendent's mid-year evaluation. That in all intents and purposes ends the meeting for tonight. Our next meeting is going to be January 9th, 2023. That will be a regular session at 7:00 PM at the Central Avenue School at 149 Central Avenue. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
So.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries? All right, thank you all for coming out and happy holidays to everyone out there listening on the video.